Hello and welcome to Open Council here on Open Council. My name is Lynette Manzini, this is Tuesday Talk. And in this program, we are looking at the Harare City Council Commission of Inquiry. So President MSM Nanagawa set up a commission of inquiry to look into the dealings, the operations of the Harare City Council from 2017. The commission has been doing its work, it has been receiving, you know, information from various stakeholders. We have seen live streams even here on Open Council, where the, you know, people like the mayor, the town clerk have been questioned. Residents are also allowed to come in and give their input. In today's conversation, we want to look at this commission just to find out whether it's doing its work, to find out, you know, the perception people have about the commission. Is it managing to do the work that it was set up for? Today, I have experts with me in the studio. They specialize in local government. And I'm here with Precious Shumba from the Harare Residents Trust. He's the director there, welcome to the program.
Thank you very much.
I'm also here with the National Coordinator of Water Alliance, Hard Life Manzingwa, welcome to the program.
Thanks so much.
And last but not least, Mr. Ruben Akili. He is the director with the Combined Harare Residents Association.
Thank you so much.
Gentlemen, what a time to be gathering when the commission is actually doing its work. We've seen a lot of live streams, we've seen people giving information. First of all, I want us to talk about the information that has emerged. Has it emerged or did we already know this information? I'll start with you, Mr. Akili.
Thank you so much, Lyn. So you realize that I think it's not the first time I've asked this question. As an association which represents residents of Harare, the issues we have seen your commission dealing with, the issues which have been raised by HRDC, Clean Water Alliance, Combined Harare Resources, some of the issues they raised were more than ten years ago. When we talk about the billing system which you talked about, it's an issue probably forward. The one that has taken two decades. And these issues have been carried on in the local authority area. And you realize that if you go to the general, there is the same issues. The Parliament of Zebakor, there is the same issues. But these are the issues which have not been dealt with, you know, for a long time. And then the commission only came, probably people thought that it's going to be a platform which is going to resolve their issues. But otherwise to say that those things are new, they are not new. Then the dealings in the local authority have been happened. Corruption has been happened in the local authority. Maybe probably we say, however, commission or when the commission come, the issues are escalating. But to say that the issues are new, are new idea about you reporter as you say, things have emerged in the commission about the billing system. In 2019, we were talking about billing system. So sometimes it's also the way also we talk or probably we convey our messages to the masses. The issues around billing system, they've been there for a long time. I've come year in, year out, year. Since 2017, the local authority purchased fifteen refuse trucks. They will never deliver. And we have said this to Parliament, everything we've been saying, you know, around these issues. And these issues, the local authority lost the fifteen refuse trucks. And you realize probably some of these things will find the end of the mission. And again, we then begin to bring some of the, probably some perceptions around probably the way which it's been done. However, as I said, to me, as a individual, but also from an association point of view, we have raised those issues many, many times. But again, maybe probably the commission came in the time when such issues have been escalating. And to the extent that probably desperate people thought probably that this thing would be an opportunity to then go and air out their views and probably they are going to be resolved. So it's an issue of desperation from functionality within the local authority, probably fighting again against each other. The councilors who are fighting against each other probably find an opportunity to say, ah, if I go to the commission, probably they give this, probably the local authority, you know, help me, you know. So those are some of the things we have observed as an association. But to say, those are not new.
They are not new. I want to come to you, Hard Life. Ruben here talks about these issues not being new. He says, you know, the three of you have been reporting on these issues. You've been highlighting this, discussing them with us, the media and also the residents. What is your perception of the work being done by the commission right now?
Thank you very much, Lyn. I think Akili has explained that these issues have already been there. And the work of superior institutions like the Washington University, that's highlighting these issues. The way that has been done so far by the commission, to me, it's not convincing. And the reason why I say it's not convincing, I've seen the commission major or minor in terms of the gravity of corruption that is happening in the local authority. We have not very serious issues. The Pomona issue being a very hot issue in terms of the contract, in terms of its cost and benefit analysis in our city. And the expectation was that we have such contracts where the local authority is losing on a daily basis, thousands. If you look at the Pomona that I'm talking about, we are looking at the city, Karu Dadi is now in a danger, losing 2.7 million on waste collection that is being paid to the Pomona, losing on a daily basis.
That's some expensive waste rate there, 2.7 million.
2.7 million on collection alone. We are not talking about deposit, which is daily cost relating to the quantities of waste for the year 2022 and higher. So those are the pertinent issues or major issues that I think the commission should have first focused on. You look at what we have focused on, procurement of tissues. While I'm saying it's not an issue, procurement of wallpaper, those were issues that the commission was focusing on. So to me, I think they are not doing any good in terms of delivering. And it's understandable because you need to look at how it was composed, whether it was composed because of any agents issue or any, or these issues as the previous speaker said, we already know in the public. We thought probably the commission would come to deal with very pertinent issues, let deals, right? Issues around, you know, solid waste, the geo-pomona issue. We say water issue in the city in terms of very big issues. The issue around water treatment, chemicals, you know, issues around pollution. Remember we had, I think we highlighted that issue around, you know, the pollution in the lake. So I don't see, maybe I would say those are challenges with a top-down approach. Maybe it's because the commission, who composed the thing makes it necessary. But like what the other one is saying, we have as citizens of Harare raised these issues. And if there was genuineness in a resolve, the action should have happened by then. And I don't see.
Who are you expecting this reaction from?
We have superior institution in the country. We have the order general's office. They've done important. And the findings should have led to a forensic audit, not necessarily a commission. Number two, we have Parliament, whose role is to play in oversight role in terms of looking into how resources are expended. Those are processes that I think should have taken, you know, a place. So, but what you've seen is, we also have that. They see, we have this map on the corruption commission, which has been also dealing some way of questioning in terms of the results. We also have the other one, exactly that, another one, also the president, what is it called? Ah, you see. All those are a plethora of institutions within the city. Who could have played any role, not necessarily a commission. Yes, yes, been, has happened now. So I think maybe the other last point that I think is important, let's look at the context. It's coming under a situation or environment where you have figures, serious figures within opposition ranks. And it's opportunity, time for fodder to feed on that division. And render local governance system within local authorities useless and justify. Preferably, or, you know, yes, they might want to do the institution, the creation of a commissions, not this one, but to run local authorities. And so it's enough, I don't think personally it was necessary this time to talk about the commission. And what they've been doing, yeah, if you look at how they've been questioning. You see, no, you know, don't, don't, don't respond to that, just answer a question. You know, in those allegations that are raised, you know, a person should be given a platform to be responded. Unfortunately, we're in a context where, as the commission comes, we've had a mayor, we had lost touch completely with, you know, what should have been the private issues at council and genuine resident issues. So the context then, in a way, gives some, you know, opportunity where they see some sort of value in the commission, but I don't see.
If I can come to you, Precious. Hard Life here says that this commission comes at a time when the mayor had lost touch with the real issues that, you know, they're supposed to look at. And also he's lost touch with the people. What is your thoughts to that?
I think we need to appreciate the context in which Mayor Jacob Mafume became the mayor. And we also need to reflect on his role in that. After the August 2023 election, harmonized election, Mayor Ian McQuone assumed the office. And he had initiated a process of engagement with the various stakeholders on a systematic basis, on a very regular predictable basis. You would know that Mayor McQuone is going to do this. There was open communication between the city and the citizens. And we were gaining confidence in the office of the mayor. Now, when Ian McQuone, who had the legitimacy of being elected, despite the party from where they got elected, had chosen him. And obviously, the councilors listened and voted for him to be the mayor. And this type of mayor is ceremonial in terms of the constitution, in terms of the municipal sector and the electorate. When he got into office, there was a semblance of full order. There was dignity in the office of the mayor. Now, the issue of disconnecting from the people arose from the fact that Mayor Jacob Mafume was linked with Senior Social Am. And Senior Social Am came to cause the recall of our elected representatives. That was taxpayers' money that brought all the 45 elected councilors. It was the legitimate process that brought in the fourteen women's quota councilors. And then someone just assumes power and begins to recall people. And a person who had worked for a very long time in civil society, yelping build the capacity of civil society to lobby and articulate people's issues. And this person had assumed the status of a pro-democracy person. And the assumption therefore was that when he took over from Mayor Ian McQuone, we are getting a younger, more vibrant person with a greater appreciation of the democratic ethos of the civil society movement, of the citizens' aspirations. And therefore, you would appreciate that civil society, residents' associations, a lot of stakeholders, it's so much more to say, well, the politics has come, but we are not politicians, we are not interested in who is the mayor. We are interested in whether this person delivers to the satisfaction of the residents. There had been so much negligence or neglect of a public mandate by bureaucrats in council. There was massive looting of council, lent council resources due to the conflict among the councilors as a result of the coming in of Senior Social Am. So when Mayor Mafume came in, everyone was relaxed to say, Ian McQuone was also a respectable, erudite man. He had also beauties on the brand for administration and governance. And Jacob, we had went with him for a very long time. And he had proven to be someone we could trust. And so when he started the recalling of people and the way he was elected, you remember that the party whose ticket he got into office, he had chosen another person. But still, the defiance of that authority that brought him into office created this sense that probably he has rebelled against these principles. But we are not politicians, we are not interested. So we gave him that benefit of doubt. But what we have learned over time is that he is concentrated more on consolidating his powers as a mayor. A ceremonial mayor who now reports to the fore duty from Monday to Friday. He comes to townhouse, he works like an executive. He wants to be in every meeting, even board meetings of Rofaro Marketing. He wants to be sitting in the board meetings of Harare Quar. He wants to be involved in procurement meetings. He wants to be involved in meetings.
But what's wrong with that? Isn't that an active man?
That, that, that is the problem. The principle of a democratic society is the distinction in terms of the roles and responsibilities. When you are coming in as the oversight person, the people's representative, you let your decisions happen in an open, transparent process. It means you have no fear that if I give my executive, led by the accounting officer, the town clerk, this responsibility to execute the resolutions, the decisions of various committees of council, the resolutions of the full council, I can sit back and work with my councilors to make decisions, to write the rules of the council system. And I am trusting the executive to do it because they are on a payroll, on a salary. They wake up to do things, to execute the decisions. But the disconnection arose through this arrogance, this content of the aspect of citizen participation, this content of other councilors, this antagonism of some of the directors in council, this overbearing presence of your policymaker in every decision that creates disharmony, that creates conflicted confusion. And that is why you would find that when he appeared before the commission, the commission did not go to townhouse to gather evidence. That evidence was brought in by, by people working in the council, some of them working closely with him. Why? People don't betray their trusted leader. Are you seeing the sense? The reason why we are getting so much evidence, so much information concerning whatever he is doing as a mayor is because he has lost the boardroom, he has lost the executive. We don't have substantive finance director. We, he has been, we reportedly pushing for the extension, the second time around, extension of the contract of the acting finance director. Why, what is his benefit in this person remaining as an acting finance director? When they have advertised for the position, there is no substantive human capital director. What is it that the city is communicating with the local governing board for them to fail to take transparent and accountable steps towards filling in those positions? We hear that there has been a lot of lobbying to say, if this one goes through the interviews, please delay or don't engage. So there has been a lot of corruption. And we believe that the mayor is disconnected through his actions, his own actions. He is the first mayor in our understanding to get the authority to drive, that is wanting to drive a council vehicle assigned to the mayor's office. What is it that he wants to do that his aides and driver can't do? Because they are employed to be in the mayor's office. But now, when a mayor in a ceremonial position, he disconnected himself through the Pomona deal. You recall that when Pomona was introduced?
I'm going to hold you there, we'll come back and talk about the Pomona issue. But I want to come to Mr. Akili. Hard Life spoke about how the minister, you know, the commission has been set up at a time where the mayor is disconnected, there's a disconnect between the mayor and the people and the issues. People just want lit streets, they want water in their homes, they want garbage to be collected, they want a functioning city and that's not what we see. And Precious here spoke about, you know, the, all the politics surrounding this disconnect. Earlier on, Hard Life said, this commission comes when there's a disconnect and it's affecting the commission. Maybe if you can, you know, shed light on how this disconnect affects the work of the commission?
Maybe what I can say on what you have asked to say, this disconnect, I think Zingwa, you tried to, you mentioned the word fodder. So like for an example, fodder is feed, isn't it? You know, so you realize that when you have such a disconnect, this becomes, this is a desperate, and that's the word which I'm saying. So people are desperate, Lyn, that possibly if I go to the commission, my issues, probably my labor issues are going to be addressed. This is the context which you're talking about, the disconnect between, Mr. Shumba talked about, the disconnect between the executives and what's probably the mayor, the disconnect between the mayor and the residents. Because the original channel of engagement or the original local governance system that was supposed probably to happen and ensure that the citizen engagement in decision-making processes happens is no longer functional. So, so, so when someone comes, Zangofanandaguti, people have problems, they're going to bully one street, you know, by probably a certain individual. And some people don't attention about it, so they can report to my police. Probably more than one, I don't know, man, I try to go over one way, we can't tell who did it, I'm on here. Maybe someone went somewhere, reports quickly, because you have got hope. Probably this, this, this person or this can be able to address our issues. So again, to me, as I said, when I say this issue, some of them talk about the billing system, 2019. And, and people go there with the desperate, we are desperate, that's the word you can say. It's desperation, you know, because the original local governance system or even the governing system, institutions which are there, which are supposed to deal with issues, they are not doing anything.
Like Precious mentioned that the, the councilors, the mayor, they're supposed to be representing the residents. But if they are now involved in every, you know, tender process, whatnot, it's, you know, there isn't anyone to do the oversight role anymore.
Yeah, but I can say something, maybe probably I've got, kind of like my, probably my, 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 my submissions to, to say, when I say the local government system, right, we have got councilors, we always talk about this, they play a representative role.
Yes.
Right? And, and, and as residents agreed with the Pomona deal.
But what had the residents done in, you know, because the commission is open, they allow you to come and raise these issues, right? You can make submissions, is that not?
Yeah, people make submissions, people make submissions in different ways. But what I'm trying to put across to say, the issues which are coming through, I gave you, because you talked, we asked me, why are people, you know, what has this affected the people, the disconnect? So what I'm trying to put across here is the disconnect which you were talking about. Decisions when they are made, Lyn, when a decision is made, right? When you are not involved. But when a certain platform is then created, you then go there anticipating that my issues are going to what? To be, that's what I'm saying, you know. So, so, so when you talk about, I gave an example of the Pomona, for an example, to say even residents were not consulted, right? And probably from Mr. Shumba, when you were saying, at some point in time, the mayor, you know, said, we are not going to pay a coin to the, to the, to the, to the geo-pomona, whatever. And we have nothing to do with that. And that was the same position with residents. And it's clear, and it's known in the public space. But over probably two, three, four months, the position has changed. So what has changed? You know, and then it begins to bring those perceptions now, which Hard Life were talking, and even the perception to say, I see, pardon me, raise your background, I tell you, I change your decision. Because at local level, even when you talk about the Pomona issue you're talking about, go to committees and ask the Pomona, they, 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 they will tell you, ah, no. You know, this, this, this is not good for the city.
I think it comes to the issue of transparency that Hard Life spoke about, where he said, if there's a change in position, if we're saying we're not supporting it, I think it's important to engage the residents. Besides this Pomona issue, which other issue do you think that because there's lack of transparency, you know, within the city council will affect, has affected, you know, the relationship between city council, be it, you know, the commission and, and the residents?
I think relations, it's like a contract, it's a social contract. So any contract that is instituted is based on certain principles, it is based on certain deliverables that comes off. You know, residents within the city have raised pertinent issues that I think should have been attended to by then, before even the commission. Because some questions comes around, remember they are being paid, this commission, they are being paid, right? And you can look at whether the commission will produce what residents, which are service delivery issues, are looking forward to. Or, like I've said, the mission is to push towards a commission over the city. And remember, citizens, not only in Harare, across the nation, have issues with commissions appointed to run local authorities. And the other contextual issue, issues that are causing this, look at what, what is being, you know, pushed at the moment. We are looking at, it's not only about the Pomona. We are looking at privatization of water.
Yes.
We are looking at privatization of refuse. So these are issues that, or perceptions that the residents have to say, after the work of the commission, there is what is an agenda behind the commission, right? And number one, which has already started to be implemented, is underway, is issues around privatization of water that I've talked about. And this, this has got an implication in terms of affordability of water services. And already it's also not a solution to the underlying governance issues that are affecting the city and, and affecting negatively its capacity to provide water. And even its capacity to collect refuse. So relations with the commission touches on that. And they go beyond that to look at local government, governance system that we envisage as citizens, based on provisions in the constitution and in agreed contract that existed, where we have a long-anticipated local governance system that should give some sort of self-autonomy for locals in Harare, locals in any local authority to self-govern. So that issue, you know, where we have a delayed Uh, implementation of that provision. It's, it's a long, uh, hi- hi- history of emotions, where people are saying, no, we expected that at least by this time. Uh, answerability, uh, you know, uh, accountability. Of the lower tier of government is provided for in the constitution should be given effect, so that at least. We know that the city of Arar fully is answerable. Uh, any local authority is fully answerable to issues that they should, that affect us, that they expected to deliver. Uh, as part of the, uh, social service delivery mandate. But it has been a long time before that happens. And, you know, from, from, from Norway, a commission from the center. This is an appointment from a central authority, is, is brought in Arar. All those issues understand the reaction of citizens, understand their reaction of residents. Based on all those contextual issues. You know, we have heard the Second Republic since, uh, twenty.
Seventy.
Seventy. Right? Look at what was their promise by then to this date. So the expectation in terms of the local governance system that I'm talking about was by then we should have gotten some of these things, right?
We should be reaping the results.
You see, the results, and at least, you know, the challenges with so, uh, service delivery issues is. You go to city of Arar, they point the lo- uh, central government. You go to central government, they point at city of Arar. And residents, uh, they grasp between two elephants that are fighting.
And they become the biggest loser. Let's, let's bring in Precious and I want you to touch on this issue around this blame game between. Um, I, I, I have spoken to a couple of people, when you're speaking to councillors, they blame, you know, um, the, the local government. When you, when you look into local government, they are also blaming, uh, the councillors. Yet the residents become the biggest loser. Yes, you are blaming each other, but we don't have water, we don't have refuse collection. How, i- is, is, has the commission brought out these issues? Because I think it's a sticking point of, for many years, it's, it's a blame game. Has, have these issues been brought up by the commission? Do you think they are worthy enough for the commission to bring up?
I think the, 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 the key point that we need to, to think around. Is the trust of the commission. If you look at their terms of reference, they focus more on the financial matters. And this emanate primarily from the conflict on Ruffaro Stadium. The government had been begging someone to, to, to take over. Uh, the, the rehabilitation of Ruffaro Stadium. But they did not prioritize the rehabilitation of National Sports Stadium. They did not prioritize, uh, the, the, the rehabilitation of Gwanzura Stadium. They never thought of any other stadium, but they thought of the ceremonial home of football in Zimbabwe. Uh, or they did not even think of Bubba Field Stadium. They thought of Ruffaro. Why did they not go to a state, uh, stadium? The National Sports Stadium is run by the Minister of Local Government. Uh, and they could have done a modern stadium using a national asset. But they thought of a rate payer's asset. And when they were coming to that, they were not coming to negotiate. They were coming to impose a, 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 a developer. On a, in thirty year lease. Uh, and that alone tells you the magnitude of the intention. To take over a city asset and transfer it to a private individual. Without the involvement of the citizen. So now, at that point, we had a very sober mayor. Who was really particular about representing the interest of the city. And we begged him because we believed he was fighting our cause. That the asset must remain the asset of the ratepayers, must remain the asset of the city. But when the mayor, uh, and his council rejected. They, they proposed the agreement to surrender it to a private individual. To do the rehabilitation on a, a build, operate and transfer basis. Where for the thirty years, like Pomona Dam site, for the next thirty years. The funding, the resource, the financial resource would go to a private company. And when this happened, the city, because it was wise enough to establish just strategic business units. There was a sense that these companies that have come to the rescue of the city of Arar. Should be targeted. That is why you saw during the hearings, eh, by the commission. There was so much anchor, or there was so much force. Negative energy directed at Arar quarry, at the city parking. At the Ruffaro marketing. These are companies owned by the ratepayers. They do not belong to the national government. The national government has its own assets which have crumbled. The national railways of Zimbabwe, uh, is now a shadow, is of its former self. You can look at how they have stripped the city of Arar of electric, electricity infrastructure. Zesa is operating from a city of Arar property. They took it over. They never compensated the ratepayers. They have, uh, taken over the, even the construction, the, the. So I am pointing to these issues as the genesis of the real conflict on financial matters. So when City Park came to the rescue and started working on the Ruffaro Stadium. When Ruffaro Marketing was brought in to put resources there. When the city's finance put resources there. There was anchor, not, uh, in the private individual, say, offices. But we believe there was anchor and head in the offices of the president and cabinet. In the offices of certain government ministers. Who wanted to punish and fix the city of Arar for not showing respect to the national government. So when they did this, uh, so the blame game that has happened. And the commission hearings have revealed that the real intention of the commission hearings. Is not to substantively address the structural deficiencies. In the service delivery value chain. But it is to take away most of the revenue streams of the council. And transfer them to companies deliberately chosen by government bureaucrats. If you recall how they forced, uh, Pomona. The Office of the President and Cabinet got involved to say, you have no need to now do a due diligence. It has already been overtaken. The project has now been granted national project status. That is overruling the constitution, that is undermining the constitution of Zimbabwe. If you go to section two sixty-four of the constitution. It is specifically talks about the transfer of governmental powers. To competent local authorities. Eh, and provincial and metropolitan councils. They are already competent by the operation of the law. By twenty thirteen, when the constitution came into being. The Urban Council's Act was the main act of parliament. The Rural District Council's Act was the main act of parliament responsible for rural and. Um, urban local authorities administration. It means they had been going through the processes, so they are competent. But devolution has not taken place. So the blame game is a figment of people's imagination. There is no blame game. The reality is that the government does not want to cede fiscal, administrative. And political powers to the lower tiers of government, in particular to local authorities. Who give more than eighty-five percent of social services to the citizens of this country.
A devolution issue.
It's a devolution issue. So when you are hearing of the, 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 the blackening, the blacklisting of the council operation. The, the, the delegitimation of the elected councillors. It is not by any mistake, it is a deliberate attempt to create the impression. That councillors elected on an opposition ticket are incompetent. And cannot fix the social service issues affecting the citizens. So what we have is a government whose minister of local government is the chairperson of the ruling party. Who is fighting. Again, a council elected by the citizens of Harare. On a, on a partisan manner. He is not doing it because he wants to be objective. He is doing it to achieve a political goal. The political goal is to weaken and disable a local authority run by the opposition. So what we have is a situation where the councillors have nowhere to run to. The executives have been crippled to the extent that vacancies in the local authority. Are not filled when they are supposed to be filled. They do advertising, they do disciplinary matters. The officials simply know that they can run to the political office of the Minister of Local Government. And get sympathy and directives after directives. Uh, verbal and written are issued and the council cannot function. It does not then say the councillors are innocent. It does not really say, eh, the bureaucrats are good. The bureaucrats are rotten, just like the councillors.
Can we say that they are now taking advantage of the situation?
Exactly. They are now utilizing an opportunity that was not there before. We had ceremonial mayors in the caliber of advocate, which are the Masunda. We had ceremonial mayors in the caliber of Bernard Gabriel Manyen. These guys delivered to the best of their abilities. And they were able to suspend some of the most senior bureaucrats at townhouse.
The politics were still okay.
Exactly. But now, because we have a situation where they first crippled the bureaucracy. Now we don't have a finance director. We have someone who has reached a retirement, but is being kept there. We don't have a human capital director. We have someone using a, 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 a fake, uh, job evaluation exercise. To create positions and a new structure in council. And we now have officers in council failing to implement council resolutions. So the resident now, you will be interested to know that the majority of the councillors. Are even failing. They have lost the legitimacy. Because they abandoned the ticket, the mandate that brought them into council. They abandoned it. So they can no longer go to the resident to say we want to do a feedback meeting. Because a feedback meeting is the local council of the council. Where the citizens and their elected officials and their bureaucrats. They meet to discuss serious service delivery issues and must be able to resolve them. So these are the challenges. So the blame game is a figment of imagination. The, the, the government wants to appear like a good referee. But the government is actually the one chaining the council. It cannot move.
Mister Akili, these are, I'm smiling, but these are very depressing issues. And I'm thinking, if I ha- I haven't had water at home for a week, with what you've just said, with what Precious has just said. You know, is there an end in sight to, you know, to these issues? If the foundation is faulty, they say that a house will not, um, stand. You know, the Bible talks about that parable, that a house built on sand, you know, will not, um, you know. Will, 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 will collapse. If, you know, just using the information we've received from Precious. How the commission came to be, what they were coming to, um, to investigate. You know, the, i- i- it's, um, it was, it's sort of like a witch hunt, but they have a particular target. Um, when you look at issues such as the evidence they are receiving. How can we be sure that this evidence is genuine evidence and not hearsay?
Thank you so much. Um, so, thank you so much, uh, Lynn, uh, for, for that, for that question. I think, uh, from my, my perspective, like when such issues happen.
I think maybe, let me also just add, why I'm talking about the hearsay, we heard about, you know, the mayor being given a kickback. For the ERP system. Uh, these are allegations that are already there in the public domain. We heard the, the investigating officer during the commission asking, you know, those question. I think it was around what, two hundred thousand, uh, kickback. How do we know that these are real issues? How do we know that this is evidence-based? Or, you know, they are just out to, you know, is, is that chain Precious was talking about? That's just tightening up the operations of council.
Yeah, so, so what I wanted to say around the, the two hundred thousand issue. Uh, so you realize that in, in, in issues of corruption, it's, it's very, very difficult to, to get evidence. Um, I think we have that conver- we had that conversation before. Maybe probably corruption can then be seen, uh, probably when Lynn spends, you know, we begin to.
And buy a big property.
Exactly, and, 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 but again, you realize that, uh, that's the reason also I was saying to say. Sometimes when people are desperate, probably they would have heard something, a problem which they think they are true. And then probably they go to, you know, to the areas which they think the, the issues are going to be resolved. Like I said, it was for example that when people becomes desperate. So probably if I hear that, probably there are some issues which are happening at a townhouse. Uh, maybe probably I can then be able to, uh, uh, go, uh, and, and, and then report. But again, um, for, for, for us to then to be able to deal with, with the issue. Uh, the issue remains, you see.
So, so when you talked about the issue around the, the two hundred thousand issue, to say around, around corruption, to say, do you have evidence? You know, uh, that's the reason why also I say that sometimes it's very, very difficult to get evidence. And then probably you see the fruits, you know, of, 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 of corruption. Um, but again, I think what is also important is that when we deal with these issues, we need to be factual. Because, eh, you know, um. These, uh, platforms are platforms of higher magnitude. That they deserve accurate, correct information. Which then can be able to inform, you know, decision-making. But sometimes when you don't evidence, you then travel lies. The whole process. And then again, people begin to lose what's confidence again in the process. And, and, you know, and it then also probably weakens the credibility of those who are probably presiding over inaccurate information. Or the information that is not true or vice versa. So it's very, very important that in such platforms, uh, people also need to bring information which is factual. You don't need to go there, eh, 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 the platform like those ones with ESA. Or probably try to then build on ESA to get information. So what I'm just trying to put across is, we really need to be factual when we are dealing with, with, with such issues. So that at the end of the day, the same platforms probably which is perceived to kind of like say to your people. Cannot at the end of the day discredit. Because, uh, 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 of, 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 of using information that is not factual. At the end of the day, it then, uh, loses not only objectivity, but also credibility. And people probably will begin then to lose confidence on what's, what's really happening.
Hmm, others have also, um, highlighted that maybe. Hmm. Others have also, um, highlighted that maybe, uh, you know, there could be some people who want to settle scores and use the commission, uh, to do this.
Yeah, I said that before, you know, um, 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 to say, uh, everyone thinks it's an opportune time. You know, probably it might be an official, the, the local authority was fighting his fellow comrade. You know, probably fighting for position and all those things. And, 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 and you realize that people begin, more becomes an expose. So the, the commission becoming expose way, but also there are some of the key issues. The key issues we're talking about comrades and friends, we're talking about devolution implementation. Which can also be able then to ensure citizen participation, which can also be able to ensure that there's transparency and accountability, you know, real issues. So again, uh, the service delivery issues, you know, which must also be attended to. I think it's very, very important that we, we really need to, 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 to kind of like refocus to say, what is needed for residents? Is it service delivery or is it probably for, 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 for other, for other gains? But from a, a, a resident's perspective, as I say, that such platforms, any platform, it might be a full council meeting. It might, people need to give correct information. People needs also to be men and women of integrity. Uh, and then so that those platforms cannot be then trivialized or, you know, loses credibility.
Hmm. I want to bring in Hard Life and talk about the privatization of water. There was an outcry when, you know, we, we learnt of this development. Um, what happened to the tendering process? What happened also to this process being, um, transparent? And how does this affect the residents? Why should the residents care?
Uh, thanks very much, Lee. I think the, the challenge, uh, is that people think that privatization of water is an idea that was birthed recently. No. Um, the twenty thirteen National Water Policy is where we have provisions for privatization. I think it's important. So that policy is specifically stated that on water delivery, we will have what are called, uh, water service authorities and the water service providers. Right? And the policy is very clear that a water service authorized cannot be a water service provider. It can be, it can be, but it's, it's, sorry, it's explicit on who can be a water service provider. Right? So it's, it's stated that a water service provider can be Zinwa, very specific in the policy. It can be private company, that is specific in the policy, right? Local authorities are designated as water service authorizers, so they give authority to a provider. Right? In some extenses, in, in some instances, the police, police then says, uh, a water service authorized can be a water service provider. But the main mission of the policy is to make a distinction between an authorizer and a provider. So that's the genesis of privatization of water in the country. And you should also know that our national water policy is borrowing those provisions from the Sadaq Water Police. That's where these things are coming from. And this is where it is giving, uh, where we, you know, provision around privatization for water. And we all know that in the past, Zinwa used to have resources emanating from water when we are thriving and paying agricultural sector. With some challenges around that, Zinwa targeted private, sorry, portable water delivery. Which is a, 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 a well-documented, um, uh, uh, residence movement where you read much about even the, you know, good work that the likes of Precious and Tim did in the past before some of us were even known in this nation in terms of issues around water. Right? Because they were informed in terms of what happened with the takeover of, uh, uh, Harare by Zinwa, which was resisted in Lawa. So provisions around privatization, I think it's important that I point out that it's a policy, eh, a weakness that we need to address, right?
So yes, I suggesting citizens need to push back against the privatization policy.
Yes.
Is, is, do we, do we, do, is there legroom to push back?
There is because, you know, you know, I, I think you know that after the policy, the, the practice in this nation is that we first have a policy and we'll have an act of parliament. Remember, we currently have, um, Review of the Water Act as we speak, as we are seated here. And if we are not careful, if we are not forthcoming in terms of targeting the National Water Police, that can become an act of parliament, which we can live on over years around privatization. What are the challenges around privatization of water? I can, uh, look at what has been stated, even in terms of approval budgets for local authorities. They have been very clear on tariffs around water. And look at the trajectory in terms of the cost for water in the city of Harare as an example. At one point, we had twenty-five cents per cubic meter, which is one thousand liters of water costing twenty-five cents in the city. It moved from twenty-five cents to, uh, seventy cents. And the city was making an argument that we need to cover the cost of production. And the cost of production, which is the current status of, was expected seventy cents. When they were using between ten to twelve chemicals to treat water. They moved from seventy cents to ninety cents to a dollar five cents. Look at the proposed tariffs for the twenty, twenty-five budget in the city. Already bit by bit, there is movement towards, you know, uh, uh, privatization, number one. And two, the, we, we have the implications of what privatization will bring in terms of the cost, which is affordability common around access to water services. So that's one bearing. Number two, privatization, what is it coming to, 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 to deal with? Is it addressing the root cause? What are the root causes to the crisis of water delivery in the city? Is it about water being a public, a good or being a, a private service? I don't think so. We have governance issues, some of which we're talking about here, which adversely affect the water service delivery, you see. We have issues around billing, questionable issues, even before, before, uh, the removal of BIQ. Residents have already que- in the past, they questioned the billing system of the city in terms of what comes. You will find a bill, uh, you know, charging water consumption, where you have not seen water in, 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 at, at the time.
I have been a victim of that, um, Hard Life, if I can just jump in. You pay for water and once you do this, like you're penalized. When you go, you, when your bill comes again, it's like it has quadrupled.
So, so if those issues are not addressed, Lynn, we, privatization will not come in any way to solve that. And let's look at issues around accountability. You know, a public entity in a private institution in terms of accountability to citizens and residents.
Private, uh.
Private, you know, they come with, eh, you know, provisions that have, eh, you know, legal backing in terms of you can't access a document from a private company.
And they're there to make profits.
You see? So it, it, it is a whole discussion that I think would require its own day. But eh, the bottom line, in terms of, the main point that I'm making is the broader movement in the civic society, we need to look at where is this animal coming from. Last, eh, month, Comrade Precious, I was in Zambia. Remember, we've had, because what happens, Lynn, is we'll have an Africa Water Police. We'll have a Sadaq Water Police blowing through the Africa Water Police. And nations develop their own national water policies, informed by those, uh, policies. Now we have had in Africa, uh, Water Police till twenty twenty-five. There are current conversations around post-twenty-twenty-five Water Police for Africa. They are saying maybe towards twenty-six, the three, uh, you know, a police. Look at what, what they are propos- proposing. I had the privilege to look at some of the documents. Water is an economic good. That's the main message.
In a, in a, in a economy.
What, you see, water is a driver of economic, eh, development. And already what they are looking at, you know, issues around mining, whether you're doing mining, you're polluting water, you are disturbing the hydrological basins, you know what has been happening with mining, you know, all those issues. They are not concerned about that. The main concern is around the economics, uh, which, uh, you know, I'm not saying it's not important.
Hmm. Thank you for that. And as we round up, um, Precious, I want us to, you know, zero in on the commission. Um, I, I hear their, their tenure has been extended. They, is it for the next three months?
Yeah, I think reports from the, yeah, reports from the, the news, they're saying that the.
They've been extended. Yes. Because initially it was six months.
Then they were given a June February this year.
Yes. And then there's been, the, the news reports that it has been extended again by another, uh, three months. Um, wh- wh- what, what would you like the commission to change? Given, let's say they, they have worked until the end of February, what would you want them? I know you have spoken about this, but as we round up, what are the issues that you want to see the commission tackle? Um, before they, you know, before they end this exercise?
Um, you see, the, the, the priority should be on, um, the, the human capital issues. Uh, the performance of the local government board, it is a, a cost issue when you recruit, uh, people and they go for three, four years in acting capacities. And the local government board is failing to fill up those positions. Uh, we need the commission to talk about the Pomona dump site deal. We want them to, to focus on the waste management arrangement where a private player has been given, uh, the responsibility to, to collect garbage from domestic, uh, people, eh, from the central business district and industrial areas. And without an amendment to the, uh, Urban Council's Act to the key functions of a local authority, there are around sixty-four functions. Uh, these issues are being taken over at a very fast pace. We want the, 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 the commission to refocus on how the national government is crippling the, 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 the ability of the local authority to function. Particularly the issue of, uh, for example, the bar retail market rehabilitation. They brought in Masimba, uh, holdings to, to do the, 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 the temporary market using the, 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 the presidential powers of an emergency. What emergency? This issue has been there for a very, very long time. It didn't do, uh, need a fire outbreak for this company to be, uh, contracted. It means that this had already been planned, that they want to take over, uh, the retail market. So we also look at Mpeza Namo. There have been problems all over the place. The land sales involving, we want to know, they must, the commission must tell us how many Zimbabwe anti-corruption commissioners or officers or police investigators are beneficiaries of the land sales from the city of Harare from twenty seventeen to the present. Because we believe that a lot of the corruption that they are talking about in the hearings are fueled more by, uh, the, 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 the investigators intimidating, uh, the council officials and councillors and end up getting stents. And the cases go to court, they obtain hostile witnesses and the cases are dismissed. People are acquitted, but the stents are remaining with the investigators. When they want more money, they accuse officials, they accuse officials in city park, they accuse referral marketing officials, they accuse Harare Quarry officials, they get bribes. And they, they, they weaken the court cases, people are acquitted. So it becomes a game. The commission needs to restore its, uh, integrity, its independence. We do not want them to undermine the, the office of our councillor. We don't want them to undermine the office of the elected councillor. They have not helped, uh, matters by not, eh, openly inviting ordinary residents to come and testify. But they invited people to make submissions. They, they, they have not shown that they are going to invite residents who submitted to come and testify. Because if it is about addressing the key concerns of the city, we want them to invite, uh, people like, uh, uh, Oga Investments. We want them to begin to bring people who have bought council, um, golf courses. We want them to be invited. Those who have be made huge, uh, purchases of council land, who have made developments on wetlands, we want them to be summoned. Oga Investments, they could invite, uh, other developers, eh, Westy Properties, they can invite, um, uh, what's this, eh, uh, the contractors. They must also invite CMEG. CMEG was contracted to deal with the Boschoff Road. That stretches from, uh, Seker Road to Simon Masore's Road, past Sunning Joe at Ben Wharton Park to Simon Masore's Road. That road is now impassable. You cannot, eh, drive around that road. But they got the contracts, uh, recently. So we want the commission to focus on all the contractors who have done our roads in this period. They must appear before the commission, they must interrogate them. What type of works are they doing? There were companies contracted to do Khuazana Roundabout, uh, Waren Park Roundabout. There was a company that was contracted to deal with that road, High Glen Path up to Korobro, Panunzpa Machaina. That road is broken down and we are not hearing the commission talk about the huge taxpayers' money that has gone to these contracted companies. We want a new focus. They must restore people's confidence in that process. If it is a public process, let it involve the citizens. They can facilitate a public hearing at Magamba Community Hall. Invite residents of Waren Park, what's, eh, Cambuzuma and surrounding areas to come and testify. They can go to Glenview, facilitate those public hearings. Let them hear the people speak in those processes. But for now, we are not convinced that, so as, as, as I finish, I anticipate that the commission will, one, recommend, uh, the setting up of a commission for the city of Harare. And in particular, they were going to use, eh, the case of Jacob Mafume councillor and a host of other councillors. They will take them to the independent tribunal, which will be set by the, the Minister of Local Government. They, the expectation is that they want to dismiss them, set an example of a, a certain number of councillors. They will also recommend, uh, maybe the city parking, uh, referral marketing and Harare Quarry. They will make a recommendation that will bring in some people from outside the council process to be playing oversight over them. That is something that we have seen based on the submissions, based on the people invited to appear. The, 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 the commission is likely to make far-reaching recommendations. And we believe in this circumstance, they must focus more on how much the devolution funds allocated for Harare Metropolitan Province or for Harare City Council have been utilized. In particular, the road construction project, we want eh, 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 eh. We want a, 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 an audit of the, eh, imagine the road rehabilitation program. Phase two expenditures on major roads by, done by C M E D. Done by, um, Masimba Construction, done by, uh, there is, what is it? This company that has done roads, the Cake Man, that is, that, that did the Kwasana extension. Uh, road that did the Kwasana Roundabout. There was poor workmanship and we are interested in those that did the Lauren Drive. They cannot allow them to get away with murder, these are taxpayers' money. These are not funds from pockets of cabinet ministers, they are not funds from anyone's pockets. If it is for the taxpayers, then the ratepayers in Harare have a right to know. How much the government has diverted from the city of Harare to Geo Pomona Waste Management. Uh, Private Limited, we want to know under what conditions. They have allowed private players to take over the functions of the local authorities. Without amending provisions of the Urban Council's Act, the Regional Town and Country Planning Act. Among, among other, other laws, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and unfortunately we've come to the end of today's program. And there are a lot of issues that you gentlemen raised here today. I don't know whether I will be, I, I'm feeling, you know, depressed already with the kind of issues. There are a lot of issues that need to be dealt with, you know, you spoke about the Geo Pomona, you spoke about water privatization. You spoke about citizens', uh, engagement, where is the citizens in this metrics? And I think Hard Life spoke about, um, you know, the, the, the problem with the top-down approach. In all these things, the citizen is the biggest loser, they're the biggest stakeholder, but they're nowhere to be found in the metrics. I'd like to thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you so much.
There you have it viewers, that was, um, the conversation we were having today. And focusing on the work that the commission, um, is, is, is looking at and the local government system. Uh, in our local authorities and how it affects, um, the residents. And there were a lot of demands that were raised here, that, um, the, you know, the speakers here. Hope that the commission will look into before they round up. Let us know in the comment section what you think about the issues that have been raised here today. Until next time, I'm Lynette Benzini, goodbye.